Good afternoon and welcome to our Cobb County work session. Today we will receive the amendments to our code and we'll kick off our session with our community development director, Jessica Gwen.
Good afternoon, everyone again. Jessica Gwen, Cobb County Community Development Director. Today we do have our work session on our 2024 code amendment package. We've asked all of the department heads who and staff who have been responsible for working on these codes, subject matter experts, to come and speak on these codes and to present them and answer any questions that you all might have. The way that the program is scheduled here and it's set up, it's not in order of the code. We've kind of tried to group it so that, for instance, Sabrina will be the first one up. She'll talk about both of her amendments and take any questions and so on and so forth. That way we're not switching staff. Hopefully that'll help things move a little smoother. But you do have a copy of the slide presentation and of course, we will present these today for informational purposes. We'll be back at the first meeting in November for the first public hearing and then the second meeting in November, we'll have the second public hearing and that'll be your opportunity to vote on the code amendments. So we'll go ahead and let Sabrina write, Economic Development Director, come up and get us started.
Good afternoon.
So Economic Development has two code amendments. We'll start with the first one, which is on film permits. And the purpose of this code amendment was just to clarify that all parties interested in filming any television show, commercial, movie must submit a film permit application directly to Cobb County Economic Development Department. And the purpose for that is that we have to route those applications through multiple departments within the county to make sure everyone is aware, whether it be police, fire, DOT, and various departments such as that. We also wanted to clarify that fees may be assessed for different purposes as it relates to film permits. For example, every permit that comes through the county will assess, will be assessed an application fee of $100. And that is because, you know, we again route all of our application requests through various departments and requires a lot of staff time and phone calls and that sort of thing. We only assess a permit fee and give permits out to filming that occurs on county-owned property or on the right-of-way, anything that will impede county-owned right-of-way. For example, if a film occurs at a private residence, it doesn't necessarily require a permit because it's not county-owned, but they may have a lot of cars, traffic on the roads and require police or DOT to block off roadways. And in that sense, it impedes the right-of-way, so then we do assess a fee for that. We also have an expedited film permit fee of $500 and that is because sometimes we get requests where they need a permit like maybe the next day or within a day or two. And also, various departments will assess fees for use of their buildings like the jail, courthouse, and things of that nature. And if there are any other specific requests as it relates to film permits, then the fees may be assessed for that. And that's the only change with the film permit fees. Are there any questions in that regard?
Yes, just to clarify, there is an existing fee.
Yes, yes.
And it's going from what, to $100?
Initially, our film permit fee was just the $100 fee, well, $300 fee for film permits. So I've just had my staff just to research other counties. So we're at, we actually lowered our fees to be more in line with all the other counties. So we do now require a film permit fee for every single application, whereas previously we did not. But we found that we were not requiring a permit for filming that would take place at a private residence, however, they still require police or DOT and different things like that.
Okay, so you're just streamlining it across all types of businesses.
Correct, absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions for Sabrina? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
Jessica, I know we had met the other day regarding the language. And I am looking at section 2-180, specifically B. And it's under the double line and it says, "And to cover the cost for marketing the county as a potential film location." I didn't understand why that language was put in there because that's part of what Cobb Travel and Tourism is supposed to be doing. So I'm not sure why Cobb County is doing that as well and then paying, and then charging for it, especially when the county is paying Cobb Travel and Tourism to do the same thing.
So that is in our existing code anyway, and we probably just modified the language to make it more clear. So that's currently in the code that we have, so we just kind of clarified some of the language in that. But we do meet quarterly with Cobb Travel and Tourism with the film permits and we also work with the state film agency as it relates to ensuring that county residents are aware that they can market their potential properties, their own property, private properties as a potential filming location. So we work in partnership with multiple agencies all across Economic Development and that includes filming as well.
Okay, are there any other questions? Commissioner Sheffield.
I have a question regarding the use of county facilities. Will those facilities be utilized over the weekend or after business hours? What happens in a scenario where you mentioned a jail, for example? What happens?
So the, the location scout can request a film any day or time that they prefer and we coordinate with those different departments to see if those spaces are available. And then they communicate directly with that department directors to see, for example, if the library or courtroom or the jail is available on that specific day. If it, if we're able to accommodate them, then they'll be accommodated with the specific fee, but if not, then they may have to change the date of their filming.
Okay.
And sometimes we do lose out because things aren't available.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any other questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Burl.
So will the fees be different depending on what the facility is or what the venue is?
They can be and those, the application is available on our website and it is fully fillable on the website as well. So for example, there's a county facility use fee of $100 per day. The jail, they may require their own specific fee. We have fees, for example, if they have to set up different types of tents or if they're using pyrotechnics and involve fire marshal office. So there are different types of fees, so different filming requests will have different types of fees. So it's not a straight fee across the board. We have the application fee, that's one fee. We have an expedite fee, that's one fee. But if they use multiple county facilities, each of those facilities may assess a fee. So they may have, they may incur different charges. And sometimes they may require staff time and so they're assessed a fee for that. And again, we researched all the counties in the metro area to align our code with all the other counties in metro Atlanta.
But how many, well, okay. We don't have a schedule of fees for each amendment?
We do, we do. Well, we, we have some of them. It's not all-inclusive of every single department, every single building, but we do have a schedule on our website. So when they pull up the application, they can see the different fee schedules, the fee schedules there, yes.
Just so it's consistent.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner? Thank you, Sabrina.
Okay. The next code amendment relates to our previous South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. And as you are probably aware, on May 6, 2024, House Bill 1330 became effective, which changed the name of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority to the Mabelton Development Authority because that authority is within, their full boundary is within the city of Mabelton. So now the Cobb Board of Commissioners no longer has authority to appoint any of those members to that board anymore. It's all within the city of Mabelton as well as the Cobb delegation. And so now we're just removing that code and reserving that space for future use.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next Judy Jones will come up and speak to chapter 18 and also chapter
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. Chapter 18 is the Plumbing Code, which falls under the purview of community development, but I'm going to cover these code amendments because they're related to water efficiency requirements. So these amendments are to the International Plumbing Code to comply with the metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District requirements. And they include revisions and additions to several definitions, more stringent water efficiency requirements for plumbing fixtures in new portions, in new and portions of renovations or repairs made to buildings, including one and two family dwelling units, changes to landscape irrigation system efficiency requirements, changes for reclaimed water from wastewater treatment plants, so different uses that people can reuse the water from the treatment plants, and changes to rules for sizing water piping systems in buildings to allow for design methods that account for the demands of water-conserving plumbing fixtures. And these were, this language was provided to us by the North Georgia Water Planning District and they're requiring all, all counties within the metropolitan Atlanta area to adopt these amendments and, and cities.
Does anyone have any questions for Judy? Okay, thank you.
All right. The next section is section 122. And these are some cleanups to our Water and Wastewater System Code section. So the first one is 122-111 and we added a requirement to notify the Water System Dispatch, Emergency Dispatch Operations Center before operating fire hydrants. We currently require anybody that wants to turn a valve in our water system to notify us. The code does not specifically call out notifying us whether they operate fire hydrants. And we've had some issues with some private firms doing fire flow tests and not letting us know. And then we can get calls of dirty water in an area and we don't know what's going on, so we want to clarify that in the code that they need to notify us before they do that. 122-130 clarifies the requirements for new developments, when they need to provide gravity sewer and when they're allowed to use septic systems. So it's just some clarification language. 122-152 clarifies assured water pressure. So it, the language is just modified to clarify that the water pressure that we say that we'll provide is at the meter. So if it's a multi-level building, it's not at the top level, it's, it's at where the meter is located, which is at the bottom of the ground, ground floor. And then that section also removes water tower requirement for developments in high elevation areas. And then section 122-242 specifies septic systems to conform with regulations of Division of Public Health. So in this section, previously we kind of repeated what the health department's requirements were. Instead of repeating their requirements, we're taking that detail out and just referring people to the health department requirements. So that way, if the health department ever changes their requirements, our code is not conflicting with the health department requirements. It's the health department that permits septic tanks, so people have to follow the health department requirements.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Judy?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, our next amendments today are to chapter 78. And as you all recall, the board adopted recently a moratorium on health spas, new health spa applications, in order that staff could go forward with reviewing the codes and presenting a code amendment. So that's what'll be coming forward today, as well as some amendments to the door-to-door solicitors ordinance. I would like to point out with this ordinance, this code amendment, if the board opts to move forward and adopt that, you will have the opportunity also on the evening that you adopt the code, that if at that point you'd like to lift the moratorium, then we can also present that as an opportunity for you as well. So Detective Witt is going to be speaking to these amendments.
Good afternoon, Detective Witt, Cobb Police Department. The first code amendment is to the process for the door-to-door salesperson's permit that is transferring the entire process to the Cobb County Police Department Regulatory Services instead of going through the business license office, then gets transferred to the police department, then gets transferred back to the business license office, then ultimately ends up back at the police department again where we issue the permit. This way, people who are applying for a permit would come directly to the Cobb County Regulatory Services Police Department, apply for the permit, we'd run their background, background information there, and then issue it the same day. That would also change the fee from $55 fee to a $30 fee in conformance with the rest of fees that we charge for the other regulated permits from the police department. Are there any questions on, on that one?
Yes, and just to clarify, burglary is a felony?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that'd be included in that?
Yeah, so the, so the denial reasons are in conformance with the way that the other permits are. So they can't have a felony within the last five years, so the burglary, assault, battery can't be a convicted felon in the last five years. Of course, the alcohol permit talks about alcohol problems and the door-to-door would be something that would be alarming to people at their house. So sex offenders registry, burglaries, assault, battery, that's all included in it. It would be disqualifying for the last five years.
Thank you. Any other questions? You can continue.
On section 114 to 115, it just changes the verbiage to change it from license because it was with the business license to permit, which will be a permit issued by the Cobb County Police Department Regulatory Services. And then for under definitions, this starts going into health spas. Changes are made to conform with state law definitions. So remove references to professional healthcare establishments and fitness centers. Previously, it was noted, it was saying professional healthcare establishments in our ordinance, but in 2019, the state of Georgia recognized massage therapy as professional healthcare, so we took it out of that. It would also add definitions to be clear about massage and massage therapist. And that's to make it clear in our ordinance what a massage therapist is. So any touching of a person, manipulation of soft tissue, which is taken directly from state law, it doesn't include the entire state law definition, but it adds, it adds the main part of it. The reason that we didn't add the rest of the state law definition because it starts talking about other ways, adding scrubs, adding different things, which really, it really didn't matter as putting into ours. We're just closing loopholes that we found in doing inspections. This does not in any way limit a massage therapist from doing their job at all. And it also doesn't limit any other professional standards. So let's say nail techs from doing foot massage because they're instructed that and they have a professional license to do so. Cosmetologists in barber shops, they get instruction on head and neck massage, so they're allowed to do that under their professional license also. So it doesn't impact any of the others at all.
Any questions regarding that before we move on?
Under 272, it changes, it changes adds to any regulatory unit of the county that has the ability to inspect the health spas. Also, it talks about the records that aren't protected by HIPAA. So because they are professional healthcare workers, any records that aren't protected by HIPAA were allowed to inspect. Under 273, so it adds owners and managers as responsible parties. Previously, it was just, it didn't have both of them because you can be an owner, manager, and licensee, three different titles that can be at that business at any given time. And if one, we, we are covering our bases to make sure whoever's responsible for the business at that time, that we can hold them accountable for it. And then also that the current list of employees requires names to be reported upon hire and prior to them working, they have to get a work permit to work there. If they're not state licensed, that's in conformance with our other permitted activities. So alcohol upon a precious metal dealer, they're required to have one prior to working instead of 72 hours too. On 78-275, under the hours in place of operation, once again, it adds licensee or manager instead of just the owner because any three of those entities would be responsible for that business at the time that it's operating. And under the prohibited contact, it's a requirement for any persons that are performing any type of massage to be a licensed massage therapist. Are there any questions on those codes? Then under 78-291, on application, it requires a listing of all names used, including aliases and American names used in submission, and a submission of the diagram of the floor plan. We found that during our inspection investigations, many of the individuals that are working at some of the healthcare establishments go by a different name. So we would like them to have that listed as when they are employed with that, so we know who we're talking to and so we know who they are. And then under 291, that's also that they have to, once they get their license, that they have to open within a certain amount of time, which is in conformance with the other business license applications. I believe it's 12 months. And under 293, it, it's prohibiting anybody from living in the health spa. There's an ordinance that says that they cannot be there within a certain amount of time. During my inspections, I've seen a lot of things that lead me to believe that people are living there, talking about sleepwear, bedding, cookware. Now, these things aren't a singular thing, it's not going to define that, hey, somebody's living there because there's a pillow there. But I just want to have it put in our ordinance, so when we come before you can say, hey, there were all these things that are there. And so the public knows, these are the things that you can't have there. You can't have an abundance of clothing. You can't have a refrigerator full of food. You can't have regular beds. You can't have, you know, sleepwear, lingerie, any of those things. Those are all added so we can let it be known all out in front, we're not allowing this and this is an indication that somebody could be living in that establishment. Any questions on any of these?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
With respect to 78-293K, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, L. L, it's with respect to foot massages.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that I've gone to a masseuse.
Yes.
And received a full-body massage plus a foot massage.
Correct.
So here it's saying foot massages must be performed in chairs in an open space. I would not have been moved to an open space to receive that service in addition to my regular service.
Correct. And a lot of the establishments we're going into, they have foot massage areas and people are just going and getting a foot massage. And that's why it's listed as that. If you're getting a full body with a foot massage, we're not going to require them to move from one place to the other, as long as they're a licensed massage therapist and they're doing foot massage out, out in the open. Because like I said, there's establishments that go and do foot massages. I can name establishments that just have like 19 chairs sitting out there that they do foot massages, which is fine, as long as they're licensed massage therapists and we wouldn't have, require them to move from one place for another. But if they're just doing foot massage and solely foot massage.
Solely, I would, yes. I would consider maybe adding that language, the solely.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was thinking when I read that part in there. And then the second portion of that, it says patrons must be appropriately clothed when receiving foot massage services. Again, not to be specific, saying pants, jacket, shirt, but you know, is appropriately clothed? Does that mean fully clothed? What, what do you, what are you communicating when appropriate? You're saying appropriately clothed, so that's not viewed subjectively and argument, argued subjectively as well.
Well, from my experience, when I go into some of these establishments and people are completely nude on the table with just a towel on and the employee is saying, I'm just doing a foot massage.
Right, I recall that.
That's what I'm, that's what we're trying to combat with it. You know, if they're wearing shorts and a t-shirt getting a foot massage, nobody has a problem with that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so just there, I'm just, I know solely would be helpful, it was added, and again, saying appropriately clothed.
Yes, ma'am.
There could be some more specificity without necessarily naming each article of clothing that could be considered appropriate.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I had for that section.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry if Commissioners have any other questions. Go ahead.
I have a question regarding that section 78-293-5.
Yes, ma'am.
With cookware utensils and cooking equipment, at one of our hearings, the owner communicated that there was, and I believe you also confirmed that there was a microwave at the location.
Yes, ma'am.
But I don't know if a microwave would be deemed cooking equipment or is it a way that we can include that to allow a microwave at the establishments?
It is because what we're laying out is may, if, if there's a microwave in, in my break room, in my office, and I'm bringing lunch, that's, that's no problem. But it's just, it's not a, it's not against county ordinance, this isn't making against county ordinance for them to have a microwave or a singular cookware item there, it's just laying out what indicators are that there could be possibly somebody living there. And I testified in front of this board, talking about one of the establishments I went into that had a refrigerator full of food, including raw fish and meats, and there was two people there and it was full, and they were, they have a rice cooker and they're cooking out back and everything else. But of course, they had suitcases and they had regular bedding and they had lingerie and stuff like that. Those are just the indicators. So it's not saying that they can't have, it's just possibly an indicator that we can bring forward.
Gotcha.
That may be an indicator of people living there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And then Commissioner Sheffield, if I can just add on, because I had actually requested that we put the except for the microwave and toaster oven, because again, this applies to establishments that are not doing other things beyond the massage therapy. Earlier in the code, they're required to diagram out what is required in each room. So in this case, for the kitchen area, it would be diagrammed that they would have the toaster oven and microwave, so that way staff would know it was there prior to approving the permit.
But the concern is if it comes later, like if it's not in the diagram, but what if it comes later? I just wanted to make sure that people weren't restricted from warming their, their lunch.
No, no, ma'am, not at all.
Okay.
Right, and so my understanding, if it's not on there and they go in and do an inspection and see these things, then it would be room for them to then revoke the permit.
Would a diagram be as detailed to include things like a microwave that are as portable?
The, the, the business license is asking for a diagram when they get their license, so.
I can see a mic, a built-in microwave. So you're saying if somebody has a microwave that they just purchased that is not built in, it needs to be diagrammed?
It was asked to be diagramming the rooms and what their use is, including the massage tables and chairs.
Including the massage.
That's what we're really shooting for. I don't believe the business license is being as specific as that to say, this is a blender here. I think it is more, more of the, what is this room used for?
Okay.
And what, what's the equipment inside the room?
And the section of code that he is referencing is 78-291-4, where it says that a diagram of the establishment's floor plan must be submitted with the application. Floor plan should include the location of all rooms and equipment located within.
Yeah, I guess I just don't perceive a microwave being considered equipment. I mean, when I read that, I'm reading the floor plan per se, not necessarily those things that are portable in the space. If there's any saving grace or catch-all language, it says that evidence to be used may include, but is not limited. So we're not beholden to each thing that's listed here in specificity, but it's kind of like a totality of all of the evidence.
Correct. Totality of the circumstances is what we're shooting for.
Anybody else have any questions regarding? Anybody else have any questions regarding these sections? Okay, you can continue.
The next section is seventy-eight two ninety-four. Those are grounds for denial, suspension, revocation. So it's been added that in subsection that they have to appear in front of the LRB if they have repeated violations. As we've seen, we, when I visit a, a location once and we have a problem, I usually go back and visit them again. And if I keep having the same problem repeatedly, then they can be brought in front of the licensed review board for revocation or suspension if they will not fix the problems. And then under seventy-eight two ninety-nine, it's requiring work permit applications provide accurate addresses. We found that they haven't been doing that all the time and that each place that they're going to work in unincorporated Cobb County. So they can't have one for multiple locations. They need to have one for each location because I've also found they're moving around a lot, not just in Cobb County, but outside of Cobb County. And they have to use their name and they have to have it before they start working, which is in conformance with our other permits. So it's in conformance with the alcohol upon precious metal dealer permits. And then it requires that any permit that is suspended or revoked must be turned into the permits unit. And it prohibits them from altering or concealing, defacing, or destroying their permits.
All right. Any additional questions, commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
All right. And I get to close this out, but before I do that, I want to just take a moment to, first of all, to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to look at the health spa code and for putting the moratorium in place. As you know, this is an issue that's an issue nationwide and also throughout the state of Georgia and just give a big shout out to the public safety team, police department, as well as Alicia Webb and the business license compliance officials. They've done a lot of work looking at this. They've done some training. They've really put a lot of effort into this and I think it's really positioning Cobb County well to be a leader in this type of, this type of work. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll start with chapter six. This is pretty simple. This is an amendment to section six dash one forty-seven. And this speaks to the process and the requirements. If someone were to appeal a decision, you know, you all will hear alcohol issues and permit issues. Whenever those appeals come through, you all, if someone wants to appeal your decision, they can appeal to the, to the court system. And the state law has recently changed. That specifies what documentation they have to provide if they want to appeal a decision of the Board of Commissioners regarding alcohol. So all we're doing is amending that language to come into compliance with the current state code. Questions on that? Excellent. The next item, kind of similarly, this is chapter fifty and this is the environment section. This chapter speaks, this particular part of the chapter speaks to erosion and sediment control procedures. It's all regulated by the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. And of course, they have a model ordinance. So we're just making a few changes here that will bring our code even more in line with the model ordinance established by EPD for land disturbance permits issuance and erosion and sediment control. So section fifty dash seventy-one, this is the definition section. There's a lot of language in there where it refers to the director. Well, in this case, it's speaking to the director of the Environmental Protection Division. So and Commissioner Gable and I met the other day. Right now, the definition says agency and it speaks to the community development agency director. We need to change that language to say agency director. Just to have clarification between what is the role of the community development director of Cobb County in this, in this process and then what is the role of the environmental protection division director? Clarification of the definition of fill again in line to come in, to come in line with the model code. And then also there's some language just clarifying which state code section is related to the Georgia Water Quality Control Act. Similarly, as we move forward, when we look at the application process, the permitting process, it establishes what information is required for the site plan. So this plan review checklist is actually established by the Soil and Water Conservation District, so it reflects that. Provides for suspension, revocation, or modification of permits when there is non-compliance. So that's also very important and also requires or gives us the opportunity that if someone submits a permit application and there's someone who is a frequent violator of our, of our codes here, that we would be able to deny that permit if they've had multiple violations of the code over the last three years. And then finally, section fifty dash seventy-nine speaks to the appeal of the administrative decision. Whenever we speak to administrative decision, in this case, the administrative division being whether or not we issue the permit. So if we do not issue a permit, of course, there's got to be an appeal process for this. And that's already specified in the code. All that's being added here is that appeal has to be requested within ten days of that decision being made administratively. And Commissioner Gable, you asked about the timeline and, you know, if you look at our code, throughout the code, most of the code sections do have an appeal process. And a lot of times the length of time and the process that it takes, like specifically, we just talked about the alcohol appeals process. A lot of that is set by state code sometimes and sometimes it's more locally. This is actually something that's provided in that model ordinance provided by the Environmental Protection Division. So that's where that ten day number comes from. And that's it on chapter fifty. Are there any questions on any of that?
Yes, Commissioner Gable.
I know we had talked about it, said assigns and designate. Have you gone in and cleaned that up?
The language?
Remember we, in different areas that either said assigned or designate?
Right.
Have we gone in and cleaned that up?
Yeah, we'll be sure to include that. And what Commissioner Gable is referencing, throughout this section, there are some sections where it says the director is designate. But if you look at the definition of director, it does say this, the director or their designate or their assign or what have you. So we're just going to clean that up to make it consistent throughout the document. Whenever it says director, it can be the director or their designate. So in this case, it's typically Frank Gibson. All right. The next amendment is to chapter one-ten subdivisions. This is a pretty simple item here. Well, a couple of things. First of all, section one-ten dash one, it speaks to the variance process for public road frontage. We are simply amending that to reflect what actually happens. There's some language in there that refers to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those don't actually go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They go directly to the Board of Commissioners. So we're cleaning that piece up to come into, come into conformity with what we actually do in practice. And then the other amendment to section one-ten, this is one-ten twenty-five. And as you'll, you're aware, and we've talked about this before, there's a number of cases where perhaps there's a conservation easement or some open space that's required for development, maybe a subdivision and what have you. That, those easements and those conservation areas do need to be recorded as well as covenants. They need to be recorded. We haven't in the past had a mechanism to make sure that happens. So we're adding this to one of the requirements before someone can get approval of their final plat. Now then, they've got to bring proof. They've got to be sure that any type of easements, conservation areas, and also any covenants that are mandatory, that all of those are recorded prior to us approving their final plat. So at that point, they're not closed out until they've done that. Any questions on any of that?
Thank you.
All right. We appreciate that suggestion from the East Cobb Civic Association too. So always great whenever we have those folks out there providing good input. And finally, chapter one-thirty-four. No big deal here. Nothing to see here, no. It's chapter one-thirty-four. This is the zoning chapter. And again, I know this is where we're, I think, going to have the most of our conversation. I've appreciated the time that I've had with you all to talk through some of these things and look forward to hearing your discussion as a board on these items. And, you know, I know there's been some question, why are we bringing these separate from the Unified Development Code? These are important policy issues and I think it's great that the board is looking at these as, as policy issues out in, you know, in an open setting like this. So that way we can be sure it doesn't get lost in a rare, bigger document of the Unified Development Code, that we can have those conversations publicly and really be sure that the public has a good opportunity to weigh in on these things that are important. So the first thing that we've got here, this is in section one-thirty-four dash one, and this is the definition section. So currently, as you know, the, the definition for family means two or more persons related by blood, legal adoption, or marriage occupying a dwelling. So in that part, we're suggesting this bolded language here to add or guardianship. So it would be legal adoption or guardianship. Currently, it says related means persons are all related to each other within the fourth degree as defined by OCGA fifty-three dash two dash one, which includes parents, children, grandparents, grandchildren, brothers, and sisters. We, as you all recall, recently had a land use permit application that came forward where some of the folks living in the house was, I believe there was a niece or nephew. And the board had some discussion about that. So in eliminating this language, if this is something that the board has appetite to consider, it would take off some of those restrictions so that there would be a little bit more flexibility to include nieces, nephews, aunts, uncles within the definition of family. Again, so long as they're related by blood, legal adoption, guardianship, or marriage and occupying the dwelling. And then it goes on to include the foster children. So that piece has not changed. Are there any questions about that before we move forward?
Yes.
So you're striking what related means?
Right. So it's striking that piece. Related in this, in this case will mean that they're related by blood, legal adoption, or guardianship, or marriage. And scratches out the piece about the children, grandchildren, that it does add more flexibility for your nieces and nephews that currently wouldn't be allowed under this code, under the current language.
Okay. So what does that do to someone who's related by marriage, not blood?
They, they would still be permitted because they're related by marriage. So related by marriage is still allowed. Yes, ma'am.
But privacy, you can't, you can't ask them. You don't, I mean, how are you going to enforce that?
Well, really this, to your question about how do we enforce it, really this makes our language a little bit more flexible and you're right, even today. You know, we're not, as we go into a neighborhood, if we've gotten a call that there may be a potential violation of a single-family ordinance, and we're not asking for DNA test or birth certificates or marriage certificates or anything like that to prove relations. So ultimately, we really are just depending on the word of the person who's telling us.
Similar to our zoning hearings, I mean, we ask questions about who's in the home and how are they related? It does get personal, short of a drop of blood.
So are we taking out adults and not counting children or are children included now?
We're, we're getting to that piece in a minute. Right now, we're just talking about the definition of family itself. And so really, the, the, the main point here is that we're making it a little less restrictive because right now it could only be parents, children, grandparents, grandchildren, brothers, and sisters. So your nieces, nephews, aunts, uncles, those relations wouldn't be counted currently under our current code as related. This will give us more flexibility for those people who still are related by blood, marriage, guardianship, or adoption, but maybe don't fall under those specific categories. They would, it would give more flexibility for them to be included in the household.
Okay. But the last line does address children, that they're included. In the code now, they're not.
This is, this is the only thing that's different here from what's currently in the code and this is just the definition of family. That's all this is and it doesn't speak to the number of occupants. We'll get to that in just a moment. All right. If we're ready to move forward, another definition here that is going to be included, and this is one that we still need to add, but we've got the section open. This is another suggestion from the East Cobb Civic Association to add on to the impervious surface definition, specifying that calculations for the percentage of impervious surface will be made by on an individual lot by lot basis, not in the aggregate for a community of lots or a subdivision. So that's something, again, that we do in practice, but just adding that clarity, that clarification to the code so that way it's clear in perpetuity what the intent is.
Thank you.
All right. So now we'll get more into the single-family dwelling definition. So as you know, currently under our code, our code allows for a single-family dwelling unit to consist of one or more rooms that are arranged, designed, or used as a living quarter for one family, including up to one unrelated adult or two or fewer unrelated adults and their children or grandchildren. So the code amendment that's being put forward is to change that to one family and up to two unrelated adults or three or fewer unrelated adults and their children. So we haven't changed anything about the children. In the next piece, you'll see a single-family dwelling unit shall have an interior bathroom and complete kitchen facilities permanently installed. We are proposing to add to the language here that all rooms in the primary structure, and in the code, the code does specify that the primary structure for a single-family dwelling, for a single-family lot, is the, the main house. So all rooms in the primary structure have to be accessed through the front, our primary door. So you can't have, you know, Commissioner Burrell, you are aware of the situation in your district where we've got a number of rooms that are being rented out as short-term rental. So this specifies that all rooms in that primary structure have to be accessible from the front or primary door. And then the next change, this is in subsection three here, this speaks to the number of vehicles. As you know, currently, it allows for a maximum of four or less vehicles to be parked outside of a garage, carport, or the like for PRD, OSC, RA five, R fifteen, R twenty, and R thirty. So the proposal here is to increase that to five. So we'll stop right here and I'll be happy to take any questions that the board has on that.
I'm sure the board has questions. I know I do. So I'll start with Commissioner Gable to see if she has any.
Jessica, on the, I'm going to start with number three, the no more than one vehicle per three hundred and ninety feet. Where I have an issue of allowing five or less vehicles parked outside, within our code, it also allows for every single-family residential unit to have one boat parked in the driveway as well. So if we allow for what I essentially call a nine-vehicle, changing this to five outside, I don't support that, given that we have other language in our code that allows other non-vehicles to be parked. So I guess that's not really a question, it's more of a statement. But I guess for the question part of it is, was that considered when this code amendment was put forth? Because again, we do have code that allows for one boat to be parked outside of, and it'd be boat or some, something on a trailer, to be parked outside of each home.
So the, the code amendment that was sponsored and co-sponsored was to allow for an additional vehicle to be parked outside, to increase it from four to five. So that does not, the boat or vehicle on a trailer is not impacted by that. You know, as you know, we've had a number of these requests that come to the board as land use permit application request. So this is put forward as an opportunity, again, if the board would like to consider it, to allow a little bit more flexibility there for an additional vehicle. And maybe you won't hear quite so many land use permit applications, but again, that's policy decision for the board. But no, the, the boats don't weigh into this.
So another thing that doesn't weigh in is if the subdivision that was approved, if it had a reduced driveway and then required off-site parking. So are we still going to allow those driveways to have potentially five cars in them? Because then you also have vehicles that will be obstructing a sidewalk, which would then, I would have to go look up the OCGA number. If, if you have a vehicle that is obstructing a sidewalk, we could then have our police come out and be ticketing people for parking and obstructing sidewalks. So how is this code going to restrict subdivisions where we've reduced the driveways, we've required off-site parking to then have more, more vehicles than allowed?
Great question. And as you and I discussed the other day, a lot of times in these neighborhoods where we have shortened driveways and they're required to have off, you know, have additional parking space available, people don't typically park in those lots. They usually park in front of the house. So that's, that's sort of an issue that we have either way. But I think one of the things that we can add to, here to the language is to specify, and Cheryl, you and I had talked about this briefly also, to include some language here, that there has, there needs to be adequate space within the driveway to accommodate all the vehicles within the driveway. So if that's something that the board would like to entertain adding, then we can do that.
And just for reference for the board, the OCGA code is sixteen eleven forty-three. That talks about obstruction of a street, sidewalks, or other public passages. But also my other issue with going here is again, if the vehicles cannot be parked in the driveways, then we're going to have people parking on the road, which is then going to make it difficult for our garbage haulers to come in and collect trash, school buses to get through, fire departments. I know I just had an issue where we've got people parking on the road close to the entrance of the subdivision and the school bus ended up taking out a vehicle. So I, I do not support this. So I, I do not support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow?
Jessica, do you, I don't think you are here, but several years ago, we increased the three cars outside to four?
That was before my time, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And I know, well, I don't even think Kelly was on the board, I think it was prior to her, you and I were. And I was the only commissioner that voted against increasing it to four from three. And I just think, five cars in the driveway, and if you're still basing the number of people per 390 square feet, and you're packing in all these families, I mean, it ruins the character of the neighborhood, and it, and it does have repercussions with blocking adjacent driveways and people getting in and out on a narrow street, and not being able to turn around in a, in a subdivision. And I still think we need to stick with the two unrelated, and a family, and one out, one outside person, unrelated. So I don't support increasing.
Okay. Do you have any more questions?
None on that, no, ma'am.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Jessica, just for clarification, in the single-family description, that last line reads, including up to two unrelated adults, or three or fewer unrelated adults, and their children, can you just clarify for me if "and their children" or "grandchildren" is for the unrelated adults?
That's for, the children don't count regardless. We're not counting the children, you know, whether they're related or unrelated. You know, if there, anyone under the age of 18 isn't impacted by this code.
Okay, all right. Regarding the parking, I am supportive in increasing that number. As you mentioned earlier, we receive a fair number of land use permit applications with the request to increase a family size, or, or a request for increase in vehicles. And some of the applications that we receive, the requests have been upwards of, I think the highest I've seen has been 10 vehicles at a property. So I don't necessarily feel that it's unreasonable to increase it by one. Housing has changed, there's just a lot of changes with the family dynamics, et cetera. But regarding the five parked in the driveway, I would like to see where one vehicle, and I don't know how we would enforce this, like any other code, but one vehicle would be required to be parked in either the carport or a, or a garage. Now, what we find in most cases is that people are using their garage space as storage, and they're parking vehicles in the driveway, which would otherwise go in the garage or in the carport. So while I'm okay with increasing that by an additional vehicle, I would like to see where one would be required to be parked in a carport or, or garage. And regarding parking on the street, I believe we already have a code, well, with the length of the driveway, I believe we already have a code that parking is not to be in the right-of-way, or no?
So the, the driveway, some of the driveways are shorter, and where there are shorter driveways, they are required to have an additional parking, like parking lot. With on-street parking, though, unless the road has signed that there is no parking, people can park on the street.
Right, they can park on the street.
They are required to have so many off-street parking spaces available, yes, ma'am.
Okay. But in terms of the short driveway, because I have some in my subdivision as well, and you see that the cars are nearly in the street, but, and, and I don't recall if we have an existing code that reads that you can't park in the right-of-way, I'm just thinking about the driveway, the driveway lane.
No, because that would also exclude the, exclude the street itself, and unless it's signed, can't prohibit it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for that slide.
Well, we will move on. I have a question in Commissioner Burrow, and I see Commissioner Garmble, and I still have some questions.
Do you want to go?
Go ahead.
Jessica, with regard to five cars outside in the driveway, you're saying, but on, on the street, that's enforced by the police, but if there's a public road, and they're not obstructing anything, and they're tagged or licensed vehicles.
Right.
What's to prevent five cars in the driveway and three on the street with 10 people in the house?
Well, and, and as you know, this, the single-family code is one that is challenging to enforce already, and we do have a code enforcement officer who comes in every day at five o'clock. And, you know, those locations, those residences where we get complaints or concerns raised that there may be more people living there than should be, or where they've got concerns about the number of vehicles that are there, we check them several times over the course of several days. And if we see that those vehicles are there every day, and we know they're, they're actually living there and not just visitors, that's when we're able to issue a citation. So whether it's four vehicles or five vehicles, that doesn't change. That process is still the same. So yes, you know, whether, whatever the number is, our code enforcement officers are out there, and they're, they're doing that work, and, and doing that early morning investigation to hopefully enforce, you know, the goal being to enforce the code and ensure that we're meeting those requirements.
But that's just an additional strain on code enforcement and police.
Well, and it's whether it's four or five, it's no, it's no additional work for us, it's still the same, we're still having to do it, and yes, it's challenging to enforce today.
But multiply that by every one that wants five, or 10, or whatever. I'm just saying, well, it's, it's hard to control it now with the resources we have, and we keep adding more and giving more leeway when it's, it's just going to keep snowballing. Okay.
I do believe that, you know, obviously, it can potentially add to the resources, but I think the problems that we have and what we've been seeing are the homes that have, like, double-digit cars parked at their, at their homes, eight to nine, 10 cars at the home. So, you know, I, I think if it's four and it's one additional, I don't know that that would create that big of an issue, and I'm not suggesting that it won't create one at all, but I think the challenges that we've been seeing, at least recently, are for like eight, nine, and 10 to 12 vehicles at a property.
And those are usually the calls that we get, you know, the calls that we get aren't typically because somebody has five vehicles. Well, in some neighborhoods, but typically, it is the ones where there's multiple vehicles, and also when there's a lot of parking on the street, that's when we usually get those calls.
I need to go to Commissioner Garmble, she had her hand up after. I didn't realize. She's done.
Just, just kind of throwing this out there, because I know we have a home in our subdivision that has an extremely long driveway that was constructed, and is shown on the subdivision plat, so it's not like they've added on to it, but that driveway can easily accommodate six cars. Their house is also the size where it accommodates that many people, because divide 390 and essentially you get the six. So what if we wrote the code that the existing platted driveway, if it can handle additional cars, may do so? But I know, Commissioner Sheffield, in that one case that we had of yours, they built a driveway without a permit. And so to that, I, I think they either needed to be fined, or have to go back in, and, you know, do what was properly to be permitted to have that driveway. But what if we looked at it in that regards? Because then, we're not going to be trying to stack five cars, potentially, in a driveway that's been shortened, or putting additional vehicles on the, the road. What if we looked at it potentially in that way? Because again, some driveways that are platted can handle additional cars, and others can't. Would that be potentially easier than sitting here and giving a number that would be allowed? Because like I said, no one in my subdivision has complained about this one house parking six cars, because again, the driveway is built to accommodate all six cars, they keep all six cars in the driveway, they're not parked on the road, it's, it's not hazard to anybody. So would that potentially be a better way to address this? So that way, again, if the houses can accommodate the vehicles, they can have them and be within code.
I, I think anything can be considered, but the question becomes for people that need, you know, to reside at any of these units where they don't have the space for the lengthy driveway. I, I just don't want to restrict this option to those homes that can only accommodate those number of vehicles.
Right, but I'm also looking at it, most of the driveways that have been reduced in size are more of your townhomes type structures, which are then in your, like, 1,800 square-foot range. So then if we go back to the 390 square feet per adult, and then also tie that to a vehicle, you're going to be restricting the number of vehicles that could be parked in that driveway anyways, just because of the size of the house.
Okay. I mean, that's something we can definitely consider and have more conversation around.
And then, my other question, outside of parking, was on the number of unrelated individuals. Many years ago, we reduced group homes from six individuals down to four. My concern about going up to two unrelated adults is, again, we're now starting the possibility to start group homes throughout every subdivision that essentially, we have to approve to happen. So, again, going up to three unrelated adults, I understand that's not a group home, but again, since we currently limit that to four right now in our code, I have a real hard time with this proposed amendment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Burrow.
But a group home has to have a law.
Right, and I, and I think that's the difference, you know, group homes, there's a business license, there's permits, and, and that's a different type of entity.
Right, but, but again, if we allow up to two, how do you know that they're not going to be doing some type of group home that's not regulated by the state? I mean, we could be potentially getting into other areas here, because again, we're getting so close to our current code restrictions, that somebody could easily say, well, you know what, I don't want to deal with that, I'm just going to keep it at this and do this. And again, it won't be enforced until someone comes in with a, a code violation.
Also, what about, we always say we can enforce covenants, and I'm not trying to enforce covenants. I'm looking at Debbie Blair because she knows what we've been through with covenants. Covenants can be more restrictive than county code.
Yes.
So, like our, my covenants in my subdivision, we have no overnight parking.
Right.
We don't have no overnight parking in the code on the street, okay? But we do have it in our covenants. So if we pass all this, and in the covenants, it's more restrictive, and they, they say no rental, or no whatever, we can't enforce that, but we could allow them to have five, five cars and not consider what the covenants are?
The HOA, and, and Property Owners Association, Homeowners Association, anybody that's subject to those covenants, I mean, regardless of what the county code says, if their covenants are more restrictive, then it's ultimately up to the HOA or the POA to, to enforce that, you know, whether it's on-street parking overnight, or whether or not you've got a basketball goal in your driveway. That's ultimately up to the, to the association to enforce.
Okay, and I know they can be more restrictive, but if we allow this, then, I mean, the HOAs have to hire an attorney and go through all that to even amend their code and to enforce it, to get a letter from, you know, their management company or whoever to enforce it. But I, I understand this case, but there have been other times that we've allowed things, but the covenants say otherwise, and once we approve it, they have to, the HOA has to enforce it at their level, but we've, we've granted it.
Well, and every day, you know, not every day, but we often issue swimming pool permits, and there may be a process somebody has to go through with their HOA to get that approved before they come to us, but we can't check that, we can't follow up on that, so.
I would say those conditions hold true whether or not we change the code or not.
Right.
There may always be a difference, or sometimes be a difference between the HOA covenants and the county code, but when it comes to subdivisions, those HOA covenants run with the land and should supersede what we do here at the county, and when that resident moves in, they are beholden to those HOA covenants, which can, as the director said, be more restrictive, and we're not here to change what's in a HOA. So I, you know.
But we can't enforce it either.
We can, that is the case irrespective of what we do with today's code amendments. That's, that has been the case today, and that has been the case yesterday, and that's the case moving forward. There should be nothing to compel a HOA to have to get an attorney based off a code amendment, to reconcile that, unless that HOA community chooses to get an attorney because they want to change their covenants to be consistent with that. But that's, there are a lot of hypotheticals in that, that's not given.
That would be very similar to when we stipulate no more than 10% rentals in a subdivision. And homeowners, you know, you go a year or two later, and they'll have like 20%, or, you know, they're not adhering to that condition, so just some things we just, you know, we can't enforce.
That we can enforce, that is still.
Yeah. Yeah, but then, it'll, you know, it, it'll have to go through code enforcement, and therein you have using, utilizing our resources, because the community has gone greater than 10% of the rental cap.
Yeah, I'm not aware, and maybe the county attorney can weigh in, if a HOA covenant can be less restrictive than county code, I perceive they can be more.
Correct, and the minimum, the minimum standard of what the county code is, or HOAs, for obvious reasons, people want to protect their neighborhoods, to keep up property values, they have, they have covenants. Covenants expire, too, there's, there's a renewal process for that to be able to occur, and so, but, and covenants change. So you go through that process with those homeowners, with those people that own the property, to be able to change them as they want to regarding the current situations, so.
Okay. Yes, a long story short, we're not here to impact HOA covenants, nor would we by changing the code.
All right, are we ready to continue?
Just one thing, I, I do support Commissioner Garmble's suggestion of 134-1, Section 3, that if we did not increase the vehicles by number per se, but if we kept it to where it said, "there shall be a maximum of four vehicles unless the driveway can accommodate additional," the, the platted driveway. And I thought I heard from our last zoning meeting, and I don't know if I talked to John about this in public, or after the meeting, that a property owner can add additional driveway?
Yes, you can.
Without coming to, to the county?
They, they can. Typically, depending on how much you're expanding your driveway, and how much work is being done, and dirt moved, it, it may or may not require a permit. So if it's a, you know, a relatively small extension or expansion, or if, you know, you're not moving a lot of dirt, then it's, likely won't require a land disturbance permit, so.
I was not aware of that, because I think- I was not aware of that, because I think, I perceived in one of the land use permits, I think it was in Commissioner Sheffield's district, I didn't know that they did not need to pull that permit.
That's right.
They may, I wonder if they came before, if they exceeded the pervious space, or maybe they went over the property line or intruded into the setback? I don't know why.
They are still subject to the, to the impervious surface coverage, that's correct, yes. So if there's, if they exceed that in expanding their driveway and at that point, then there would be violations.
And I thought I had one more question. You clarified it. It's not clear here, and just looking at the plain language, that when we refer to children, that it is minor children. Because we did have a land use permit where we had adult children, and we ended up impacting the number of adult children that could live in that home. So I think maybe just adding that additional word can help make it.
We can add that. I'm sure that probably at the time this code was adopted, we probably had fewer adult children living in homes, so we can, we can add that clarification that it is minor children.
Which is a new phenomenon. I mean, it's a regular phenomenon these days with the lack of affordable housing. A lot of adult children are living at home. Okay. Any other questions regarding just the sections that Jessica went over, which was just 134-1 so far?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll move on. The next piece, and I've grouped all of the pieces relative to the accessory dwelling units into one piece. So the first thing, and on here you'll see, the language that scratched through here on the accessory dwelling unit definition is language that's currently in the draft that you've got now. Then the language that's bolded is language that I've proposed to make some changes. And I sent you all an email earlier this week outlining that, and also with what that could look like if that was incorporated into the code language. So I want to talk through that a little bit. So first of all, we'd be adding a definition for accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, means, and currently it says, "An independent," we're scratching residential to emphasize that this is a residential dwelling unit that's subordinate to a primary structure. So right now, the language says, "A principal, single-family dwelling unit." We're scratching that language because as I mentioned before, in the code currently, it clarifies that the principal structure on a single-family residential lot is the main house or the primary structure. So you'll see where I'm just changing that language to say, "Primary structure" to be consistent with the language that's already in there, that primary structure, of course, being the house. An accessory dwelling unit may be either attached or detached from, and we'll change this to "The primary structure." One thing I'd like to point out, and you all I know are aware, but just for the benefit of the public, currently, our code allows for accessory structures, so structures that are not a part of the primary structure, to have habitable space within them if there is a heated and cooled breezeway or hallway that's no more than 25 feet. So essentially, it would be permitted, but it's ultimately, it's an addition to the house. So under the code that's being proposed, it would take that restriction or that requirement out. Moving on to some additional language that I've put forward, it's something to consider for you all in the email I sent earlier this week. I think it's important to keep in mind that the ADU, like I said, is subordinate to the primary structure. It's a subordinate structure. So clarifying and adding some language to the single-family dwelling definition to say that one single-family dwelling unit, and not unit, a unit, shall include the primary structure, so your main house, and may include up to one accessory dwelling unit. So for the sake of our code, and as we're considering occupancy and parking limitations, whether it's one primary structure, one house, or whether it's one house and an ADU, the number of unrelated adults, the number of parking vehicles that you've had would be applied across the lot, and not you get two unrelated adults here and you get two unrelated adults in the ADU, that this is for the overall site. So if you have, for instance, you know, maybe you have your mother who, you know, still wants to have some independence, you want to have her a little closer to you, you could have a guest house in the backyard. She could live there. She's related. So that would still count towards your number of related adults, but it wouldn't be, you could have your family living in this house, and you could have three college students that are not related come live in the ADU, because at that point, you would exceed the number of unrelated adults. And then, of course, the way that's proposed, the accessory dwelling units would be a special land use permit. One thing that I've suggested adding that's not currently in the code, and this is again, bolded here, is that ADUs access from a separate entry from the primary structure shall require a special land use permit. And the reason I propose this is, as it's currently reads in the draft that you have, if somebody finishes out their basement with a kitchen, and maybe there's a bedroom, and they're not actually got anybody living there, but that's just where people come hang out when people are in town or whatever. We have a lot of those throughout Cobb County. We don't want to throw those units into nonconformity now. But if it is a unit that's accessed separately from the main dwelling, whether it's attached or detached, for instance, if you have a basement apartment and they've closed off access to the upstairs and it's solely accessed from downstairs, that would then require a slot. That's when it becomes an ADU versus just, you know, you've got a kitchen in your basement. I'm sure you probably know lots of people who have that, just as I do. We've also incorporated in here that ADU shall not exceed 50% of the gross square footage of the primary structure. And I left this part off, but it's actually in the code, that that shall not exceed 850 square feet in any case. So if you have a 3,000 square foot house, you can't have a 1,500 square foot ADU. It would be capped at 850 square feet. Commissioner Gambrell, you pointed out that currently, our accessory structures are limited to 650 square feet without some additional standards. If you all would like to drop that to 650, we're certainly amenable to that. We just thought that, you know, a lot of places, I've done some research, a lot of them use 1,000 square feet. That seemed rather large. I agree, 850 is still, you know, a good sized unit. So if the board wants to talk about that and have some discussion, that might be something that you may all want to discuss together. Also, limiting the accessory dwelling unit to be no more than one-story in height, and that it shall not exceed the height of the primary structure. There's got to be at least one off-street parking space provided for the ADU. Now, that's not to say one in additional to the number of parking spaces you are allowed for the single-family dwelling unit. It's still capped, but if you've only got two spaces for parking, and that's what's required for your single-family residence, if you're going to have an ADU, you've got to be able to accommodate at least three cars. The ADU shall be connected to the utility meters of the primary structure. They're just, you know, understanding that there's a lot of concern about rentals and what have you. If the ADUs utilities are connected to the utility meters of the primary structure, that's going to keep it more in line with the intent, and you're going to more likely have people who are utilizing for family members or what have you. Also, the ADU can only be located in the rear yard, and it has to adhere to the side and rear yard setback of the primary structure. If your lot's not big enough to do that, then your lot's not big enough to have an ADU. Maximum impervious surface coverage for the lot shall not exceed the zoning district limitation. So whatever that number is, and most of our single-family districts is 35%, that's not increased just because you have an ADU. You're still capped at that impervious surface coverage. The ADU must adhere to all other standards for accessory structures in the zoning district. No more than one ADU per single-family lot, so you can't have a garage apartment, and then you've got a basement apartment, and then you've got a guest house out back. You can't have, only one per lot. Occupancy and parking for single-family dwelling units, this is something that I'm proposing that you all may want to add to the language that's already been put forward, but just to clarify, occupancy and parking for single-family dwelling units to include the primary structure and the ADU shall be in accordance with 134-1. So again, whatever the number of unrelated adults is for the single-family dwelling unit, that applies across the lot. We currently have in there that the ADU shall not be utilized as a short-term rental property. We've put forward in the email I sent you earlier this week, a recommendation that we change that to say that short-term rental of either the primary structure or the ADU shall be prohibited. So that way, it's a deterrent for people who may want to, you know, live in the guest house and rent out the main house for short-term rentals, you know, especially some of our bigger houses in the county that might be attractive. So just prohibiting that. The owner of the property shall reside in either the primary structure or the ADU. So for instance, if you have an empty nester couple, and they've lived in the same house for 30 years, and they want to have a guest house out back, they want to live there and let their family with their grandchildren move, you know, their adult children and grandchildren move into the main house, they could do that and still maintain ownership of the property, but they would need to live in either the primary structure or the ADU, so they've still got to live on the site. And Commissioner Burrell, to your point about the HOA covenants, again, that's not enforceable, but just like we have in the short-term rental code, we've also included here that property owners shall sign an affidavit stating that the ADU is not in conflict with any applicable covenants, conditions, due restrictions, or bylaws. Again, we can't enforce those covenants, but this is acknowledgement that they have reviewed those, and that they're telling us we're not in conflict with any of that, of course. If they are, ultimately, that's going to be up to the HOA to enforce if it's not in line with their bylaws. So that's what I've got on ADUs. I'm glad to hear. Any questions on either of these slides?
I'll go, and I'm going to kind of pick up where we left off with the previous slide's conversation as to covenants. And Jessica, to quote you, "We can't check that. We can't enforce covenants." If we are going to make such a sweeping change, then I propose that we hold this for at least a year to give our subdivisions the ability to update their covenants to address this. Because unlike the county that can just advertise and then make these sweeping changes, they can't because of the requirements they have to go to. So that's going to be the first thing that I'm going to throw out there, because I found it interesting that key of this proposed language is, you know, that we're going to make the property owner sign an affidavit stating that the ADU is not in conflict with their covenants. But we have people come in all the time getting permits for sheds and other things that go in the backyards that are against their covenants. And I know, Jessica, you and I talked about this because it was quite an issue with the subdivision. They were very mad that the county did not ask the individual before they were given the permit if this violated their covenants. And we actually went so far to say, "Could we put something on our permit check sheet that says this is not in violation of our covenants?" And I was told, "No." So to see this come back in this section of the code kind of made me chuckle, because this is something that citizens have been asking for regarding other permits that are being issued that violate covenants, which then put it back onto the homeowners to then take individual property owners to court to get resolved. So that would be my first thing, is, you know, yeah, let's start having this conversation, but if we're truly serious about this, we need to hold off on this to give the homeowners the ability to address it in their covenants first. Do you want me to keep going, or does anybody else want to weigh in? Okay.
Unless you want.
I didn't know if anybody else wanted to weigh in on that.
It's up to you if you want others to weigh in.
Okay.
I would just, yes, on the covenant comment.
Well, I would just like to say that we have had zoning cases in my district that the HOA covenants restricted parking or whatever, shed, whatever, and denied the resident in the subdivision the ability to do what he wanted to do. So he comes to the county and we approve it. So I know we can't enforce covenants, but how do we, I mean, at least we have, we're asking them to sign an affidavit that this isn't in conflict with their covenants or producing a copy of their covenants. But, I mean, they had, the HOA had already denied him the permit, and then we granted it at zoning.
I can share, I'm sorry, Commissioner, if I can respond, even if we grant it at zoning, it does not supersede the HOA covenant. There is no restriction or latitude that we're providing here that if in conflict with the HOA guideline would supersede it, unless what the HOA is doing is of greater latitude. Like, we can't say the speed limit is 25 and the HOA says, "I want 35 miles per hour," you know. So if the resident did that, the resident wasn't legally complying with what they should have done by living in an HOA community. There is a no instance, no instance, whether, again, I'll say today, yesterday, or in the future, that if we permit something per zoning, per what we, whether it's through an administrative zoning, through the office, or here, when we are addressing zoning here at our hearing, are we conflicting with the HOA covenant to provide any greater latitude? It would not hold in a court of law.
It happened.
And I disagree with that statement.
It would not, now, let me back up. Is it possible that people act in ways that are not compliant with law every day? Would it hold in a court of law? Is it something that would legally hold weight for them to do, it would not? They cannot rely on what we do here in zoning and then supersede the HOA covenant that they agreed to by purchasing that property in a, in a community that has HOA covenants.
No, but that puts the burden on the HOA to have to follow suit or go to court.
The HOA continues to have burden yesterday, today, and in the future. But I can tell you, it's been argued many times that the HOA probably is one of the most powerful bodies protected by law because of their ability to impose restrictions beyond state and local law. So while they have a burden, they also have corresponding power that exceeds what most communities do that have to rely solely on state or local law because they are not covenant protected.
So similarly, in most neighborhoods, like I know, you know, in Brookstone, we just anecdotally added a big covered deck, covered porch. You know, that was something that had to be approved and reviewed by our HOA, but, you know, we have people come pull permits for, you know, their deck additions or what have you, their sheds or what have you every day, swimming pools. And most HOA protected neighborhoods, covenant protected neighborhoods, most do require some HOA review of that, but that's not something that we're able to consider in whether or not we issue a permit. We only are issuing permits based on what our codes, what the county law, what the building codes say.
They cannot reasonably rely on our decisions to supersede their covenant. They just can't. Commissioner Gambrell, I'm sorry.
Okay, so next question, is it doesn't state in here if these are manufactured homes or if they will be built from the ground up? And the, kind of the background on this is I did have a property in my district that tried to put an ADU on their site, but then because it was on septic, started running into some issues, which then brought the county in. And I know the county eventually said, "No, they had to remove it, even if we had done a lot split to bring it in to conformity at the time," because they could not inspect the walls of the ADU because it was pre-manufactured. Were you able to talk to Kevin Gobble about that?
So Kevin's out of the office this week, but one thing I think is important to be mindful of, as we talk about zoning, we're talking more about the use of the property. So whether an ADU is approved or not, it's still going to have to, it's still going to be reviewed by the water department to make sure that water and sewer capacity can be met. It's still going to be reviewed by the building department. They're still going to have to adhere to all the building codes, whether the Board of Commissioners approves an ADU or not. And if someone gets an ADU, a slot for an ADU approved, and they bring it to the building department, and it's not something that meets the building code, they're not going to be able to build something that's not compliant with the building code just because they've been given a zoning permit.
But again, I think we need to be fair to people that if they're going to go to the extent expecting to be able to do this, that they're going to have to meet these specific guidelines. Because I don't, I don't know if we even, I don't think we have mobile home park. You know, what if somebody thinks they can just bring in a mobile home trailer if it's under 850 square foot and put it in their backyard? So to me, we need to be defining that further here of the expectations that we, you know, demand for people to follow if they're going to put these on here. One thing also, under F, it says, "The ADU shall be located only in the rear yard," and it's talking the setback. Within the existing code, we allow the rear setback to be combined with the buffer. So my question is, is it only the rear setback, or are we going to now further reduce the buffer that was also required to be on that property, since we're only defining it to be held to the rear setback?
ADU is going to be... ADU is, is going to be, is going to have to meet the same standards for setbacks and buffers as the primary structure. So if we wouldn't let the primary structure be built there, we wouldn't let an ADU be built there either.
Right, but, so what has happened, and, you know, the, the rear setback is, you know, 30 feet, there was a 10-foot buffer, but we allowed them to be combined. So technically, if you take out the 10-foot buffer, you've only got a 20-foot rear setback, which means none of these properties are going to be able to have an ADU built on them. So I just want to know how we're going to look at the buffer requirements that were also on the property since we're separating out the rear setback specifically in this code.
All right, it's still going to meet the same setback requirement, so we can clarify that, but ultimately, yes, any setbacks and buffers that are required for the site, whether it's the primary structure or the ADU, it's still going to be applicable.
And then just, and I don't expect an answer for this, but your example where you said that, you know, the, essentially, the family could move into the ADU and then the younger family could move into the primary structure. My first thought was, okay, how is that going to affect the senior tax exemption? And again, I know that's going to be a Stephen White question.
That's actually a great question, and he and I actually talked about that today. And of course, ultimately, you know, the tax assessor assesses the property value, but it's ultimately the tax commissioner who, you know, approves the homestead exemption and what have you. And he and I had talked about it today that if they're rental units, if someone is renting one of the units on their property, that's where those exemptions potentially will be at risk, and hopefully that'll be a deterrent for people who are perhaps seeking to. But that's a great question with regard to the senior tax exemption, and we can just dig into that a little bit further. But for the sake of homestead exemption, if the units are not being rented, that shouldn't be an issue.
Well, but just to kind of pick on you, K, of your proposed code says, "Short-term rental of either the primary structure or the ADU shall be prohibited." So there shouldn't be any rental of either structure?
Well, not short-term rental, I'm saying long-term rental also. I mean, if someone wanted to rent out one of their, we don't have anything here that would prohibit long-term rental. So if you had a family and they wanted to rent it out to one unrelated adult, there's nothing that would prohibit that, but the fact that that could potentially jeopardize the homestead exemption and also that the utilities are all tied together, that makes it less attractive to use that, use either units of the rental.
Okay, so jumping to the homestead exemption, and I know Debbie, I talked to you earlier today about this. So within the homestead exemption, part, it's 3420-2D for my board members, it says the outbuilding is physically attached to the main house. So two things, the ADU can be detached, which could potentially impact the homestead exemption. And my understanding is that essentially the homestead exemption would be to the primary, but then the ADU would be taxed at its full value. My, my problem with that is outbuildings is not defined in our current code. So in talking with Debbie, she was, she said we would then defer to the definition. So going and pulling the definition, it says, "An outbuilding such as a stable or a woodshed separate from but accessory to a main house," and there's, there's others. But then that goes into conflict with specifically our, our AD code because we have it in there that you cannot have a structure within 100 feet of a property line to have what would be defined as an outbuilding. So to me, we've got some conflicts going on in our code that, again, needs to be cleaned up before we move forward overall with this. I know there was also questions raised as far as, you know, would the main power source to the houses be able to accommodate two of those? I also question how this is going to impact our fire department, our public safety from being able to access these structures. Are we going to put fire codes because of the close proximity they could be built to the primary structure? Because we often do that in townhomes. If, I think they're, what, five or 10 feet, we require them to have fire retardant.
And again, that's in the life safety code and not so much a zoning, something that would be addressed in the zoning ordinance.
But again, if we approve this, would that, would that take?
All the life safety codes apply.
And it applies because of the space from the primary structure, or when does that code kick in?
The life safety code, the, whether it's a, you know, regardless of what the structure is, it takes into account the structure, the location, the occupancy, and that's where the life safety code determines what fire protection is required. That's going to be required whether it's an ADU or whether it's a, you know, garage or what have you. That life safety code isn't changing because of our zoning code, and the zoning code doesn't affect the life safety code. All the life safety codes, building codes, all of those are still required to be met with any zone that's approved.
And then, has there been any consideration to limit the number of bedrooms in the ADU? I know you, you know, we were talking about bringing it back down to 650, which is in alliance or in alignment with our accessory structures. And then also, I know in our current OSC and PRD codes, that the impervious surface is calculated based on the entire development, not the individual lot. Now, I know we're going to be having a code amendment to go ahead and calculate that based on the individual lot, but does that only apply to new OSCs going forward since PRD is no longer an applicable zoning code? Or are we going to be able to apply that 35% on existing OSCs, knowing that that's not originally how their impervious was calculated?
Well, the OSC is, to your point, the impervious there is calculated differently. So that may be something, I'll talk with John and see if maybe we need to tweak that language about the impervious surface a little bit to accommodate for that or to, to make some exception there. Just reflect in that, yes, you know, we do calculate impervious coverage a little differently on those neighborhoods. I'll talk to John about that.
Right, because in those situations, because it's calculated differently, you know, these could be going up. And then, we also don't talk about, many backyards are lower than the front yards. And in order to get sewer to flow by gravity, we're going to be having to lift up the rear yards. And I know you're going to tell me, oh, this will be addressed in site plan review. But again, we're going to be changing the way stormwater flows and runs, collects, potential damage to other properties. Again, I, I just see this as being very detrimental, especially since, you know, we were just looking at putting a stormwater fee based on impervious surface, yet we're going to be allowing people to modify and put up ADUs. I also had an interesting conversation with John Peterson because essentially, right now, many of us have decks in our backyards, which are within the setbacks. So essentially, yes, we would have to come back in front of the board, but how can you say, well, we want to change where our deck was, move it out another five feet, but build an ADU instead? If you've already permitted a deck to be there, how can you then tell somebody, no, you can't do an ADU when you've already allowed another structure to be in the setback? And I know you can say, well, there's a difference, but again, going back to our code of what an accessory structure is, it's, it's permissible. So I just, I see that being challenged as well.
Well, and I think one of the benefits here, you know, currently, and to a lot of your concerns here, currently, if someone were to build an accessory structure that's got habitable space, or even if it doesn't have habitable space, but if it has habitable space, it's got to be connected. So you can do that, but right now, we're saying you can build an accessory structure without habitable space, without it being connected. But in that case, it has to come for a special land use permit. So that means that all, you know, if someone wants to do an ADU that's detached from the principal structure, the primary structure, they would have to come to the board of commissioners. All of these things would be reviewed by water, stormwater, fire, DOT, all of the entities. Staff comments would be provided, you could add stipulations to it just like you do any other special land use permit. Whereas right now, if somebody comes in and wants to do an accessory structure with habitable space, and as long as it's connected by a hallway that's heated and cooled and 25 feet from the main house, we don't have that. So now then we'll have the benefit of all that consideration as well as the benefit of the public hearing.
Well, and I guess that's the point. We currently have code that allows people to currently build on for additional living space. So that's where I'm, again, struggling with this ADU. But let's, let's go back to my example, but let's, let's go back to, say, somebody has a pool and they have, I think it's a boathouse or, you know, and, right. So, but let's just say that they want to convert it to an ADU. Yes, they would still have to come in for a slump, but it's going to be very hard for the board to deny that because it was already permitted. And, and we also know that a lot of these get turned into living quarters anyways.
Well, at that point, it would be permitted as a garage or a boathouse or what have you, pool house. The slump is a separate use, or it's a different use. It's still the same structure, but yeah, so just like if you have a, you know, in a commercial space, a use that wants to move into an existing commercial space that requires a slump, you have to approve the use separately. So they would still have to come, they have to get permits to build that out as a living space with the bathrooms and all the things too.
And this will be my last question. I know I asked you if we knew, because I know Atlanta has an ADU code, and then I think you said DeKalb is where we found this from. How many of these ADUs have been built? Because they've had this code for a while, and they have affordable housing issues as well. So I don't see ADUs as solving an affordable housing issue if other areas have had these and they're not moving the mark on this either.
Well, and the, the code actually that I mentioned to you the other day was Forsyth County, not Atlanta or DeKalb, it was Forsyth County. Forsyth County, of course, being a county that is very conservative about all things development, and they've actually allowed for ADUs for a very long time. They're currently set up, the way that they're set up right now is sort of similar to what's being proposed here. If it's something that's attached to the primary structure, you can do that by right, just like you could here today. If you want to do a detached accessory dwelling unit, you would have to come in for a conditional use permit, which is what they call their slumps there, is still the same, it's a slump, it's just they call it something different. So they have the same process there. It's not necessarily about affordability, I mean, it's about just having another option for people to have a, you know, mom or whoever live on the property. So I'll let you all as policymakers decide what the policy issues are driving that, but, so that's how it is in Forsyth County today. And also, just for the record, Forsyth County allows up to five unrelated adults, so, but just for definition of family.
Can you repeat that again, Jessica?
Forsyth County is five unrelated adults as a household is what they would allow for. So different counties, different priorities, different policies.
But does Forsyth County have a college?
So are we targeting college?
No, we're not, but let's remember the whole basis for why we started restricting the number of unrelated is because of issues we had surrounding the university and our homes and our subdivisions.
Untrue. I used to sit in this BOC meeting as a citizen prior to running for office, and I watched the crafting of that. And trust me, I don't want to say it because it would be in part inflammatory to say what precipitated it, but it, it was beyond, and I did not hear discussion about KSU. It was other discussion around how other, how people of other cultures live, and there was concern about how it ruined the single-family character of someone's home. I'm not saying KSU doesn't impact it, but from my history of sitting in these meetings, I used to come every month for several years, there were other discussions that prompted the change in that code.
Jessica, first of all, can you explain what someone can do now with our current code? If they wanted to add on to their home, get a building permit to put an in-law suite or, you know, another family?
Right. Today, if you wanted to have an in-law suite in your basement, John and I were sort of referring that to as a more traditional in-law suite, today you could have that. You just come in and get whatever permits you needed to finish out that space. If you wanted to do an additional structure, that could be used as an additional, like, in-law suite or what have you, accessory dwelling, you know, whatever you want to call it, as long, if it's got habitable space, as long as it's connected by a heated and cooled hallway, no more than 25 feet, you could do that, just coming in and getting permits. You know, again, as long as you don't exceed the impervious and all that, you still meet the setback requirements and all those things. So that's what you could do today. What this does differently is it says that it doesn't have to be attached. And the only way that would not be attached and that it could be considered as something that would not be an attached unit would be if it came to the board of commissioners for a special land use permit. Otherwise, they could carry on as they currently do.
So let's say they want to add on an 850-square-foot house behind a 2,500-square-foot house for this ADU. Okay? And in an R-20 or R-15 subdivision on a third of an acre lot, you're not going to meet setbacks, you're not going to meet impervious at 35%. So, but, they could come for a land use permit, and even though they, they have variances and don't meet the requirements, that it could be approved at zoning. It could be approved at zoning.
And that, commissioners, you know, people can ask for anything they want to through zoning, and, and staff.
And they do.
Staff, as you know, we review the, the zoning requests, whether it's a rezoning or it's a slump, we review it in, in line with our current code, as well as the future land use map and comp plan and those sorts of things. So if we had someone who come, came to us with a request for a special land use permit, and they don't have, they don't meet the setback requirements, they don't meet the impervious surface covers, they don't meet any of the things that says they need to meet here, most likely the staff recommendation is going to be denial at that point. And so ultimately, you know, that decision's up to the board of commissioners. And even if the staff recommendation, if all the boxes were checked and they met all the requirements and staff recommendation was approval, again, as the board of commissioners, you have the benefit of the public hearing, the public comment to make your decision.
Right. So let me ask this. First of all, I, I think this is a bad idea to do, period. We've been flooded with emails in opposition, and I'm glad we're having this discussion today for you to explain, because I think a lot of the perception may be worse than it, than it is, but, you know, is there, even with putting restrictions, like saying that it's only allowed in R-30 or specific zonings where it's not going to meet the requirements anyway, or in, not in a platted subdivision, where homes are so close together and, you know, smaller lots, or acreage, a minimum of one acre. I, I don't know what the solution is, or if it can even be to where it's doable, but I'm not supporting it. It's, it doesn't make sense. If somebody wants to add on to their house, they can do that now, but there's, if they don't meet the requirements, but yet they can apply. We get zonings all the time that are way too dense, have 10 variances, and they could still get approved. Regardless of staff or PC's recommendations, the board doesn't always follow those. They're good guidelines, and we try to, but, you know, it's, they get to come and plead their case just like everybody else, so.
Do you want to respond, Deborah? I just, I kind of want to add on because I understand Commissioner Brill's frustration because the status or the because the status or the statistic was given to me that 85% of the eligible properties for these ADUs are located in districts one and three.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thanks, Chair. Jessica, thank you very much for working with us and, and bringing this forward. And we have received a lot of emails in opposition, but I think we received the majority of those in part because people were not aware of, or they had their own perception of what we're attempting to have a conversation around with this particular proposal. I think for the general public, and I've responded to some of those emails, for the general public, I believe the belief is that we're going to create rental units behind single family residences. And you and I had conversations very early on when this was first introduced, and I shared with you my concerns as well in being cautious or careful in not turning subdivisions into 50% home ownership and 50% rental. So this is not that. And I think what happens when people have very limited information, they pretty much fill in the blanks. And I understand that. So hopefully the perception and the understanding would be different at the conclusion of this meeting, provided people go back and watch the, today's meeting in preparation of our public comments. But I, I, I am appreciative that we're having this conversation. And whenever we explore policy initiatives, it's not always easy, but when we hear from the community, in my mind, it's my responsibility to hear, to explore solutions and to come up with viable solutions that would, that would benefit Cobb Countians. Just going back to the breezeway, so currently we have an outcult where you can build on your existing structure, but you mentioned earlier about the breezeway, the breezeway connection of like 25 feet. So can you share with us the process for approval for the breezeway, or is it just simply having the breezeway and you don't have to go through any other process for approval?
That's right. If, if they have the breezway, then they come pull permits.
Okay. So in doing that, they're not required to meet setbacks or anything like that?
They, they, yeah, they still have to meet all the, the same setbacks and everything.
Okay, I just want.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but they wouldn't have to go through any kind of zoning process or anything, but it would just be plants in the middle, you know, we'd look at it and then they could pull their permits if they met.
All right. And, and I just wanted you to provide, provide clarification because I know for us, we know this, this is what we do, but for some that are watching and just want a real, true understanding of what's happening, I, I just want to ask some of those questions that I think the audience may be wondering. We talked also about setbacks in the primary structure, and you mentioned that with ADUs, they would still have to meet the setback requirements.
Yes.
But as far as setbacks from the primary structure, now that the breezeway is being removed, is there a requirement, what would be the requirement of the distance from the rear of the primary structure to the ADU?
They would just have to meet the, the, any other restrictions or requirements for the structure, the primary structure and the, from the AD, or from any accessory structure. So it would be the same as it would be for any structure from the primary structure to the accessory structure, in this case being the ADU. Difference being other accessory structures, sheds and what have you, you can typically put those closer to your property lines. Here, we're saying that the ADU still has to meet the same setback requirements from the property lines as the primary structure.
Okay. And we talked about short-term rentals and long-term, but we just have short-term captured in letter I. Are we going to revise that to include long-term rentals?
That's, that's not proposed. And we've included specifically short-term rentals because we do have the short-term rental certificate that you all have approved with our short-term rental code a couple of years ago. The state is a little bit more restrictive as far as what we can do in terms of limiting long-term rentals and, and maintaining records of long-term rental properties, our single family residences that are long-term rentals. So what we've done, rather than saying flat out, you cannot rent this unit, is to put in there the standards that will make it a little bit more challenging. First of all, that they, they will be limited in terms of the unrelated adults, you know, for the whole site versus just one unit versus the other. Also, again, requiring the utilities to be connected is going to be another thing. That's going to be a deterrent to long-term rental, as well as the possibility that if you were counting on that for your homestead exemption, that, that could potentially be jeopardized if you rented one of the units. So all those things I think will be a deterrent. Now, that's to say if some, for instance, maybe someone has a college student or, you know, their, their college-aged child or adult child who is living at the property, and perhaps they want to charge them a little rent, you know, that's certainly up to them. But I think that the standards that are in place will make it less attractive and less feasible, again, with just the single family definitions of limitations to have non-related individuals rent that property.
Okay. And as far as 50% in gross square footage, we said that it cannot exceed 850 square feet.
Right.
What we have in the book says or, so if you can just clarify that we are going to amend that to read a maximum or not to exceed 850 square feet.
We can make sure that's clear. And again, that, that 850 square feet, if the Board wants to have some discussion about that, that, there's no magic to that number.
Right. And, and we can talk about the number, but I am concerned by the word or.
Right. Understood.
Okay. That, that was all I had for that section.
Thank you. I feel like the heat was turned on in here.
Yeah.
I'm smelling it and I'm feeling warm. Just a few things. I appreciate the robust discussion about this and discussing it openly, which has provided, I'm hoping, some clarity to those who were questioning what this is, and it's provided some clarity to me. I know that there are some concerns about this, and I do concede that there are some things that do need to be considered before this moves forward, but I don't necessarily make, perceive that we would need to wait a whole year to get some answers to some things. And that includes looking at how the homestead exemption would be impacted. I would just ask that we do have some timely discussions with the Tax Assessor's Office to determine that in the senior exemption as well. Certainly don't want to impair that, as well as the open space community and the impervious surface calculations and how this could be impacted by that. I clarified in a number of emails that I received of concern that the ADU or accessory dwelling unit is not a use by right, that just because you want to do it and have a residential property, that doesn't mean you can just do it. And you've made that very clear. I believe our special land use permit has the highest bar of all of our permits. You have to answer 15 questions for, just for consideration of it. And this Board does not approve every special land use permit, nor do we approve every land use permit. But this is different than the land use permit because of those questions that need to be answered, because there's a higher bar when there are things of unique character of the county that's being considered. The reason why we are considering accessory dwelling units is because the way that people are living is changing and housing affordability is changing. And this is one tool out of probably several tools that are being utilized to address affordable housing. ADUs are not a panacea. This is not a one-size-fix-all. I don't know how robust of a tool this is compared to other tools, but just because a hammer is more useful than a screwdriver doesn't mean they both don't have utility. We keep a bag full of several tools because at some point in time, one of them may be helpful to us wanting to fix something. And the thing we're trying to fix isn't providing places for people to reasonably live in our Accessing housing in the county is becoming much more difficult. The median and the average home prices of the county are going up tremendously, and people are staying put in their homes. We have much less inventory. And if you think about how some of us came to Cobb, a lot of us came via apartments, those are becoming more expensive. A lot of young people are opting to live at home. Also, a lot of people are taking care of their parents, which is different. We have more of a sandwich generation. A, a lot of our older relatives are choosing to live at home. By them considering these things, it may reduce the cost of living for that young person or that older person. There are also other people outside of that direct relative relationship that also could benefit by having an accessible way of living here in Cobb County. But with us considering this, this is not carte blanche, opening up every residential property for it. We've already heard there's several restrictions. There's a parking restriction, relative restriction, and there are setback restrictions already on the property, which could be limiting. And then there could be some restrictions based off of considerations for the homestead exemption. With all that said and done, I did have one clarification. There was a question about whether or not we can move a mobile home unit. And you didn't get to this section yet, but in 134-193, subsection 12B5, it refers to architectural style and design, which are to be approved by the Division Manager of Zoning or his, it should, his or her designate. And it just says his designate, and they are to be complementary to the primary structure. So I can't perceive how having something that looks like a mobile unit being complementary to most of our single family homes that we have built here in the county. Let me see. I'm still having challenges, maybe contrasting the accessory unit that we allow today with the ADU. And I know that it seems to be a lower bar for the accessory unit, but there's some things that we're considering for this that we have not questioned for that other use, what someone doesn't need to come in for zoning for. So I think it's important as people think the character of their communities could be changed with this. We could talk about how there already is something at play within our code that could be changing the character of a community today that people may not be aware of. This is, this doesn't seem to be a far stretch from that. There was only one question that I had. The first time that I've seen an ADU in Cobb, it was actually in a platted subdivision, and it was behind a single family home. It looked just like the single family home, but smaller, but it was two feet in height. And I see here we have the restriction of one story in height. But I have seen it. I've been to multiple where the, it looks like a smaller version of that home, but it does not exceed the height of the home. So in here, it says one story is a restriction, but I, I've seen very attractive ADUs where they have not been limited to one story.
And, and the, just like the square footage limitation, you know, ultimately the goal was to ensure that the accessory dwelling unit is truly accessory and smaller than.
Yes.
But if the Board would like to have some discussion and there's appetite on the Board to consider more than one story, that's.
Okay.
Certainly staff has opened a consideration of that.
Okay.
Say whatever you want to do.
I'm sorry, how many feet did you say it was? It was the, it, I don't know how many feet it was, but the height was comparable to the two-story home in front of it. Now, it may have been accessory unit, there may have been a walkway, but I just know driving by it on the main road, I just see a physical building that looks the same height as the home. And I saw it, it's been here at least for, moved to the south part of the county since 2002, so over 20 years. I think, yeah, the height restriction was the greatest concern that I had. I can't visualize 650 feet versus 850 feet. Maybe I'd have to see an example of that. I'm not necessarily wedded to that particular number. Oh, somebody was asking about the, the International Fire Code and International Residency Code. I believe Cobb Fire does comply with that, and those codes do accommodate consideration for ADUs in there already. There was a question about conversion. Maybe I didn't understand that conversion of a boathouse. I don't under, I didn't follow that. I think it was stating that it would be hard to deny this. Every zoning code is taken for what it is. I mean, yes, we could be subject to suit, but every one is evaluated on its own merit. We don't necessarily say because we've done one thing here, that it necessarily fits the other thing here. I think that could be a persuasive argument, but it's not necessarily just positive that just because we've done it once means that we always do it. So I think, you know, if, if we want to find a problem with anything, we'll find one. But I think if we truly want to address some of those issues that we perceive could be challenging, there may be some solutions to address those challenges. But I think overall, we've had continuing discussion irrespective of where people live in the county, that housing is a challenge for us. And I considered some of the codes that we're putting forward today to be low-bar considerations from some of the things that I have heard criticized as far as building, you know, multifamily or certain other types of uses, is that these are, these are lower bar considerations for addressing housing affordability here within our county. And again, it, it's not a panacea, but I, I do appreciate us at least considering how we can move the needle on something that we've been talking about for years on this Board without taking, you know. We have taken steps. As a matter of fact, I've seen both Commissioners Burrell and Sheffield take creative measures to address this in some shape or form, but I believe this is another opportunity for us to address affordable housing. Those are all my comments, and you're not even done yet. You've got more sections.
We're close.
Okay.
The rest of it's pretty, pretty straightforward, hopefully. So the, the one thing left on the ADUs is, and this is quick, just 134, 193 through 199. If the Board does approve the accessory dwelling units, then we would go in and take out of all those chapters the requirement that accessory structures with habitable space have that 25-foot heated and cooled hallway. If the Board doesn't approve the ADUs, then there will be no need to take that out. So moving on, we've got a couple of amendments that are kind of related. The first is 134-37, special land use permits. This increases the required landscape screening buffer for clubs and lodges, non-commercial clubs and lodges, abutting residential property lines from 35 to 50 feet. And you'll see here in a moment that we're also have a proposal to do the same for houses of worship. Of course, we treat houses of worship and, and non-commercial clubs and lodges similarly for zoning, zoning purposes.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Commissioner?
Jessica, were you able to get with DOT? Commissioner Sheffield, you'll be able to relate to this one, because these, of course, can go in any residential area. And you had that one that was the church, and then it got bought up by a different church, but they wanted to go larger, but then they were required to do the DOT decel, but then the road frontage didn't have enough room to do the necessary road improvements. So Jessica, did you ever get with DOT to see if we could somehow put a requirement in here that, you know, if in a residentially zoned area, that they would have to have a minimum road frontage in order to accommodate DOT requirements?
Well, and, and as you and I discussed, depending on the, the size and the, the number of seats of the, whether it's a club or lodge or, or a worship, house of worship, that the requirements are going to be a little bit different. So I think that we can include, again, because we have this section open, as well as the special exceptions section that speaks to churches, we can include some language in there that says that they would have to meet DOT requirements for, for road frontage for access. So we can add some language to reflect that.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing that Jessica and I discussed was that the structures for clubs and lodges and for. clubs and lodges and for churches can go up to fifty-five feet in height in residential areas. Do we want to look at potentially reducing that back down to thirty-five feet to be in compliance with what a single-family home would be constructed as? And so that's a question to the Board.
And, and just keep in mind with the churches, as well as with the clubs and lodges, um, whether it's a special land use permit or special exception, those are things that are coming to the Board. So you certainly also have the opportunity that if the Board sees it appropriate, based on the location where it's at, size of the lot, how close the neighboring single-family residences are, regardless, you do have the opportunity that you could consider, um, stipulating a, a lower building height for the specific use or, or church or club or lodge.
Now, I was just going to add, I think on a case-by-case would be good, just based on the, the character of the surrounding community. To your question of the height.
Anything else on those? All right, we'll move right along. This is another pretty simple one that reflects just, um, putting in code what we already do in practice. Um, this is in the powers of the Board of Zoning Appeals, eliminating number four, which says that they make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on variances for low road frontage or lot size reductions. As you know, they don't currently do that, so we're taking that out of the code to reflect current practice. Um, similarly, but different, um, section 134, 123, action by the Planning Commission. Um, it offers several options that are recommendations that the Planning Commission could put forward. As you know, often, the Planning Commission may, um, put forward a recommendation to delete to an alternative zoning district. Um, that's something that they do pretty frequently, but it's not something that our code spells out as one of their options. So just being sure that that's included in there, so that's clear that that's also something that they could do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that with regard to how, um, someone can apply for a specific zoning category that, say, like GC that we don't use anymore?
That's a good example.
But we can delete it...
That's, that's a good example.
In the zoning to GC with STIPS.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what, that refers to?
Right. That, that's a great example. And, and again, it's something that, that's done pretty regularly, but it's not reflected as an option in the code. All right, uh, moving on, um, 134, 266, as you recall, in our code amendments last year, uh, we put in some code amendments specific to electric vehicle chargers, um, vehicle charging stations. When we did that, we did not address multi-family. And what, we actually had a, as you all know, we had recently a case before you, just at the last zoning hearing, um, where it was an apartment complex. Um, under the current code, residential is all treated the same, whether it's single-family or multi-family. Uh, so with the code amendment that's being proposed, it would treat multi-family zone properties for the sake of the limitations on electric car charging stations more like commercial properties. Um, so that way, they would be able to have adequate charging stations for their facilities. Um, we've also included in here an exemption for charging stations within parking decks. Right now, there's an exemption for, um, charging stations that are not visible, so like if they're in your garage or what have you at home, those wouldn't be subject to the code. But we've also included in here parking decks with some language that says, as long as they've been approved by the Fire Marshal and the Development Inspections Division. Um, you know, just understanding that the electric vehicle chargers and that technology is still something that's evolving and emerging. And, um, again, we're looking at this from a zoning standpoint, and not so much, um, the, the electrical code and all those things, or other codes that address all those. But we just want to be sure that we do provide adequate, um, opportunity for multi-family properties, whereas we didn't get that in the last time. Any questions on that? And then the last piece is 271. This is a special exception, so same thing as with the clubs and lodges, but for houses of worship, um, abutting residential property to increase the landscape buffer from thirty-five to fifty feet. Again, it's the same as we are proposing for the clubs and lodges. And Commissioner, we can also, um, look at including in that the, the same language about meeting DOT standards for access and road frontage. And that's all I've got. If there are no additional questions, again, we'll be bringing this to you all for the first public hearing at the first meeting in November. Um, and then we'll do the second public hearing at the second meeting in November, and that'll be your opportunity to consider voting on these amendments.
Thank you. Before we wrap up, Commissioners, do you have any last questions for Jessica or any of the staff that was here today? All right, thank you all. Um, this has been a weighty and longer, um, work session, but appreciate us talking through this upcoming code amendment package. We will be back here at seven PM for our regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and look forward to seeing some of you later tonight. Um, with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.